One of our key guys is to get those numbers down. Um, the other one is water safety with children. That also falls under the term of health, but it also falls under trauma and injury prevention. So what are they going to do to billboards? The approximate price or the cost for it is going to be around $25,000. So I'm just asking that anybody who can help us in Indiana, if you could.
So the money's already there. You just want permission to use it out of that account.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I move that she use the 25,000 for the billboards.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or discussion for Adrian? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? Okay.
So the second one was a grant that I received last year. It was a waste card management grant. It was for higher agency day. And I just need to, it's a reimbursable grant. We had higher agency day last Saturday. And so I just need to, once I did that bill for that deal to pay in, it's about to be reimbursed.
How did that go?
It went great. We collected a lot of different tires. So, um, four and a half, um, forty foot dumpsters or forty yard dumpsters.
Wow, okay.
So if we're not having it since before COVID, it will.
Good.
Move approval.
Have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now I think we're caught up.
Okay, we have four of them from the county, or five of them from the county commissioners. The first one is the, uh, we had to appropriate the county's contribution to the Hoosier Start 401A program for 2025. This is not the loss of earnings, but this is actually our contribution to the 401A program for the elected officials that were not eligible for the state retirement plan. Can we go through the other ones too?
All right, do we need to use, can we do this as a group or line by line? Dan? Okay. Let's just go as a group and then we'll have any discussion after we're done.
This next item is, uh, the workers' comp insurance. Uh, as you know, we budget a certain amount each year. It's an estimate. And then we don't get our audit done until after the budget is done to determine what our workers' comp actually is. And so we did get back our workers' comp audit and the actual bill was $31,455 above what we had estimated in our budget. The next item is in the riverboat fund. And this is actually the loss of earnings payment into in-purs for those elected officials for prior years. And the next item in riverboat, which says Hoosier Start 401A, is the loss of earnings contribution into Hoosier Start as well as the, the county's contribution into the 3% retirement for those elected officials that were in the Hoosier Start plan.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom, the impurs and the, and the 401As, that's just to make them whole, correct?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, let's see the ready grant separate from the other ones, since we're, the others are kind of connected to the, like Steve said, to make everything whole right now on the retirement accounts. Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the next one is the ready grant, uh, contract.
Yes, we discussed this at the previous meeting that we have a grant from the Ready 2.0 state program of 1.5 million dollars to help pay for the construction of the water line down New Core Road to New Core coatings as well as towers. Our, we've been notified by the Lafayette region, which we belong to, that we may not have access to that grant until July or August. And so our program, our contract right now is proceeding, the project is proceeding. So we need to pay our invoices before July or August. And so in working with Mindy and Lafayette region, they have told us that we can pay before we get the grant and they will get reimbursed from the grant for the expenses the county used, um, does for the 1.5 million. So we've created a new fund called the 2025 Ready 2.0 Grant Fund.
And that's a portion of the 2.0 that we'll receive?
Yes, we also have a grant of 1.1 million dollars for the housing program. And that's the same, we've submitted all the documents for that. We probably won't have access to that until July or August as well.
Yeah, and we're sharing that grant with the city as well, right?
Right, the city has applied for a grant to construct a connector road from 150 South to Purple Heart Parkway in the ex, the area of the extension.
Yeah, thanks.
And this 1.5 million for the water line, they'll, they'll have that back to us before fall is the, is the idea? That they'll have it back? We'll have the grant by that time?
Hope so. Can't, uh, promise that from the state or from the Lafayette region, but we will submit the process, the paperwork as soon as we have made the payment and as soon as we've been notified that we have access to the grant. And then it may take a while to get the reimbursement, so.
So Mindy, it's not going to be any problem for us to put that out and, and have it not come in? Maybe as quickly as, yeah, where they're borrowing money from us, which is, but we'll be okay?
As long as we remember, you know, that we're taking 1.5 out of County General and, yeah, we should be fine. For, for now, if we get reimbursed in a, in a timely manner, we should be just fine.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion on that.
Second.
Nobody wants to touch it. Any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next up, the dog tax? Go ahead.
The treasurer's just asking for money to cover lunches for, uh, tax day. Uh, so I believe she did it yesterday. Um, paying for lunch for her crew on that day. And there's money in that fund for that.
Okay. That's not going to affect our payment? I mean, I know it's only a hundred dollars, but it's not going to affect our payment to the AWL or anything down the road or anything?
It's actually separate. When we get AWL money, or ta, dog tax money rather, um, some of it goes to AWL, some of it comes to the county, and some of it goes to the treasurer specifically for her fund. And that's what she's paying for this out of. She doesn't have a lot in there, but, um, that's what she liked to use it for.
All right. Appreciate the clarification. I'll entertain a motion on that. Got a motion in a second. Any other question or discussions? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? All right, next up, the assessor for some office supplies.
I'll take, you want me to do this, Sherry? Okay, sorry. It's, this is just one more cleanup, um, from the adjustments that needed to be made for advertising, um, at budget time for state. So she has, um, her salary adjustments were in her own fund. And we needed to move some things around to make sure that that was in place. And this is just putting it back to the original budget. So this should be the last one of these, by the way, so.
Yeah. All right. Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions on that? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? All right, moving on to transfers. Uh, the first one's us, I guess, County General, Special Appropriations Longevity.
I just lied to you. This is the last of those adjustments that need to be made. So the, um.
Yeah, that was, the last one was the last one.
The last one was the last one, but this is truly.
This is actually the last one.
Yeah. When we did the longevity payments for everybody, we took it out of your special appropriations line. And, um, instead of taking it out of the council budget where the, that line sat, it got put into the different departments. So we're just bringing it back. We're making that correction and putting it back into your budget. So that's all this is.
Okay.
It's spent, it's done, the money was there, we're just fixing it.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions on that? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? All right, it looks like the next viewer from Sherry.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first three transfers that we're, our conversation auditor's office and I had about our part timers that are already positions, if you will, being paid out of their own line as opposed to a full-time position. That's how we've been paying them the last four, few years because we've not had a full staff. So we're really creating those lines to pay the three part timers that we utilize and taking money out of the full-time line because it's there. So transferring it to their own line. Um, the next one is overtime. Obviously, we're still paying a lot of overtime and we're running short on that line. And then the workman's comp, we're in the same boat as Tom was explaining. Our workman's comp bill that we pay to people that hire them, what we pay them for.
Okay. Where are you staffing wise right now? Down one, we're getting there.
We've got training and one that starts next week, so, yeah.
One that starts, like, next week? Will that fill the one or?
No, that won't.
That's, so there's still one, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Well, that's good news at least.
Yes.
I move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any other questions for Sherry? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Andrea. Go ahead.
Uh, Marco, Assistant Chief, he will retire on October 3rd. Um, so this transfer is to be able to move money back to Assistant Chief line after paying it back his PTO. We're naming the Assistant Chief.
Okay.
Do you have a new assistant chief?
Maybe the Ocampo will be promoted up.
Yeah, good.
Second.
I have a motion, everybody's quiet today. I have a motion in a second. Any other questions for Andrea? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good morning.
Uh, this transfer for a thousand dollars from part-time equipment to purchasing tires for the county. Motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions for Tom? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up prosecutor.
Good.
Good morning.
So this is just a request to transfer funds from, uh, line of our added third diversion funds to cover the return for our office.
Okay. Questions?
I move approval.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions for him, for Jake? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And last but not least, Brian.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, did you call last month, uh, to your, you agreed to make two part-time contractors out of one of my full-time positions for the 60,000, which is the second one, for two $30,000 contracts. We just need to move that money from a full-time position to, to the public defender contract position where I pay two of my other contractors out of it. And then the 10,000, 155, which is what was the last in the full-time position. I'm asking to transfer it to the conflict, uh, PD line item where I pay hourly, uh, well, two other contractors hourly attorneys that I have to use for individual cases and appeals because that line item's going to, uh, actually is going to fall short for the year. We've got three appeals going right now, so I may have to come back in the fall and ask a little bit more money.
Okay, do you have those, do you have the contract people in place now or you, good?
How's that work out, Brian?
So far so good, looking on, um, it's a two dude.
Okay. Are they local or?
No, they're from Minneapolis.
Okay.
They also have the, uh, contract, part-time contracts for different counties.
Okay.
And, well, and Minneapolis. Kind of case like everything. Sorry, what kind of case? Many of like you right now. I just don't have a lot of, no one quite right away. But we've got four, uh, part-time contractors at the 30,000 each. And we've got two other part-time contractors at 20,000 each, contracts for this year. So there's still one open position, um, full-time position for our.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? All right, thanks, sir. All right, moving on to old business. Um, this was one I, we missed on the agenda last month, but, uh, the Ladoga Township, Ladoga Clark Township Library Board requesting the reappointment of Janet Hubble to the Board of Trustees, uh, through July 16th of 2028. I'll take it as a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, same for the same eye? Any opposed? And then the prosecutor legal intern, uh, the last meeting, we talked about that. And then there was a review of the market analysis. You want to talk to that, Tom?
Yes, at the last meeting, you received a memo from Addie Rooker from Wagner Irwin Seal with a recommendation to establish the intern position at the category PAT B with a external midpoint of 2665. At that meeting, the co, council asked to review that. So I spoke with Addie and she reviewed that analysis and then did a new one for you for the special occupation position, which is where the attorneys are classified. And so she, uh, determined that the midpoint would be 2576 with the external, external hourly range of 23, 18 to $30.39 per hour.
What did we establish last month? I don't recall.
24.
24 something? And what, what's your ask, Jake?
Uh, I mean, again, I want to emphasize, uh, the council, we're, we're looking at having a big, 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 big fall uh, into 26, beginning of 27. I'm anticipating having three of our five come across here and retire six, eight month, eight month period. You guys are aware, there's a, an attorney shortage. So what we're trying to do is ask for that upper, upper limit at 30, $39.
39.
With the idea that we're going to be able to attract people and retain them. And just to summarize what I said last month, if we can get somebody in Crawford County, I think they're going to realize how special the place is. My opinion, it's a pretty good office for it. We just need to get them here. That, that upper range will allow us to do that. Um, I, I would suggest to the council that this, we kept it in range, this SO, the special occupation, be kept at the range. So if our office ever comes back and says, hey, we want an intern, we're fully staffed and we're not having anybody coming up, you can say, listen, let's put it at the bottom range because there's not that big of a need for the county. But right now, in my opinion, I believe we have a pretty big need and I want to be able to, to get those people in. So we're not running into instances where we're not prosecuting cases. They need to be prosecuted, prosecuted or conducting investigations. They need to occur to help keep the community safe.
Didn't you say last time that you were before us that this, the gentleman you have in mind has, um, a pretty good resume?
He does, in my opinion. Uh, he's a veteran, did a couple of combat tours in Iraq. Has a police officer, went to law school a little bit later. He's already interned for our local judges last summer. So he's already, he's got kind of a familiarity with our system and how our courts operate. Looking to be here long-term, so I'm hoping to keep him here.
I think for all the, uh, aforementioned items, to get somebody here and someone of, of that experience, you know, life experience, maybe more than law experience, we go with the 30, 39.
Is that an official motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions on that?
We'll just add to the council, that is going to cause us to, to reallocate some money next month from our diversion fund and to, to, to higher level that we hadn't anticipated.
So the, the 7, 800 was for the, the lower. So it won't be a huge difference, really.
Again, it's coming out of our diversion fund, so we're not going to be asking for any money out of County General Fund, understanding that that, that's portioned in the, in October. So we're not, we're not asking for any additional money from the general.
And that doesn't short your diversion fund for other projects or anything like that?
We're, 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 we're responsible with those funds.
Okay.
But I do appreciate too, the fact that you give us the leeway to go back if, you know, the, the person doesn't have those qualifications or experience.
And quite frankly, as a resident here in Montgomery County, if we ever came and we're asking for the council to say, hey, we want money from the general coffers, should be the global level.
Any questions?
I know one of the things the compensation committee was, you know, concerned about is being consistent here. And I think, uh, with the, uh, program that Addie gave us, uh, I call it the variable comp piece of it. I think we can still meet the needs and still be consistent, you know, with these qualifications. So I'm good with that.
Anybody else? All those in favor, same for the same eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Keller from Thrive. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council. Uh, hello, I'm Ryan Keller. I'm the CEO of Thrive West Central. I'm here today to give you a brief overview. West Central. I'm here today to give you a brief overview.[174.12]
For Montgomery County and what you can expect and kind of what we're doing right now and how we continue to work in the county. Questions?
So, this is a program that's worked in Terre Haute and in Brazil.
Yes, so it's worked in, we've, we've, our building houses in Sullivan, Vigo County, and Clay County, where Brazil, and then we're kind of going full force in Putnam County now. They're a little bit further behind, but nonetheless catching up quickly, and now Montgomery County as well.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, we're getting off easy.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, Jake. It's all yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you guys had asked me, we talked about increasing the wheel tax, you guys said, hey, we want to increase it, but we kind of want to know numbers and what it would go for. So, your first slide, total receipts versus the...
Good job, Jake. What's, what's the hardest on our roads, or what's...
Say that again?
What causes us the most problems on our roads? What tears them up?
Uh, two things, lack of preservation and the frost freeze, get water infiltration into those cracks and the dramatic climate, and I think that's one of the reasons why this spring fall was bad. We went from 70 degrees one day to negative 2 the next, so it was constantly flexing. You get a weak spot and it just blows up that whole area. But we didn't chip seal, you know, if you go back to the previous presentation, we didn't chip seal for 11 years.
Yeah.
Don't put a roof on your house. Don't put a tarp on. What's, what's the foundation going to look like in 11 years if you don't fix that leak?
Have you and the commissioners talked about maybe, I know you got a plan here, but a five-year plan, how we can get really on top of this thing in the next couple of years?
Uh, we, we'd kind of talked with Jeff a little bit about some bonding maybe, but not, I mean, he kind of gave, he kind of gave his two cents on it, but that's about as far as we've really, I mean, the commissioners I know solely support it, trying to, trying to move forward, and when revenue's tight, that's your guys' department.
Yeah, I know I'd have an interest in seeing something. There are a lot of complaints on roads, and, you know, how do we get, how do we get ahead of this thing? And, at least, you know, put it on the table and discuss it, so.
Yeah, I appreciate all your work on this, Jake. This information's good to kind of give us something to look at to go forward, and so the, was the, the House bill, was it 1461?
1461.
Wasn't that originally that the wheel tax, you were going to have to have the max wheel tax to get the CCMG, but that's changed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's all changed. They took that language out. Now basically you just have to have wheel tax to get that direct distribution.
Which we've already got that in place.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. But yeah, I appreciate all, all you're doing. Yeah, the one, probably one thing is, elected officials we hear the most of is the roads, but that's not a reflection on you, that's just a reflection on funding, I think.
Understood.
The fact that you've, I've seen the, your Pazer rating increase, that's, that's very encouraging for what you're working with, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
So, can I make a suggestion that, that, you know, Jake and the commissioners put together a, you know, proposal that we can take a look at at least, see what the numbers look like?
Yeah, I mean, that's up to Jake and the commissioners, I guess, and we can figure out, I mean, we do, we do need to figure out some way to fund this at some point, whether we can, I don't know that we can fund $1.2 million out of general or property tax, or however we do it, but we got to figure out something. The wheel tax, I think, is kind of a stopgap measure, in my opinion, but it looks like it's something we're going to be forced to do here in the coming months, so. So, yeah, we can talk to the commissioners about it.
Yeah, I'd like to make that suggestion, so.
Okay. All right, Mr. Peters, let's hear some more bad news.
Bad news is real.
Hopefully semi-good news.
Actually, for you being a county, it is good news.
Good.
The other units of government around the state would envy your position. So, kind of in a nutshell, of what the legislature has continued to do is push local units of government away from property taxes and toward income taxes. So, the entire premise is, what they take away, they try and give you an option as an out, your out, as it's been for the last 15 years, is to continue to increase income taxes. The setup this time for the property tax reduction is to reduce 1% property, which are those homesteads, across 2026 to 2031. So as you'll notice previously, when you got your fiscal plan, we went out three years, because most projections are only good for about three years. This one now goes out to 2032, because I wanted to see the full implementation out to 2031, and then see one year after that. So we have laid out the systematic reduction in assessed value for the 1 and 2% properties, and then also the legislation removed $2 million worth of business personal property in a lump sum beginning in pay 2027. So what happens in all these reductions of assessed value, and you'll notice in your assessed value page, that where before we were going up, we built in a base 2% increase underneath, and homesteads as your population grows. But you'll see that these reductions that the new legislation provides for 1 and 2% and 3% property actually drive down your assessed value, which drives up your tax rate, which drives up your circuit breaker, so that you, as a unit of government, will net collect fewer tax dollars. On top of that, they've said, not only are you going to reduce the value of these properties, but you're going to give for homesteads 10% of their tax bill, or $300, back to them. So now you have an additional amount that's coming off of the amount of tax that you actually levy. So today, if you levied $100 and you collect 92 because of the old circuit breaker, now under these new scenarios, you might still levy that 100%, but only collect 72. And to give you kind of an example of, your circuit breaker, I believe for 2025, and it's back in the assumptions, we'll get to that in a bit, was like $385,000 for the year. What we've estimated on here, when we get out to 2032, that number, including now your new tax credit, is potentially going to be a million and a half dollars a year. So it has substantially taken away the amount of property tax that you're actually going to receive over that period of time. The offset to that is they have revamped income taxes. You, as a county, now will have the option to go up to 1.2% on that county-wide pool of income tax base, and bring that in and use it for all of county services. So what we did in your model was, we left all the old places that you had income tax, in the general fund, in the public safety lit fund, in the PSAP, et cetera, and then backfilled all that. And we did it at 1.2%, because the thing we wanted to proof out here was, during this entire period of the implementation and the property tax loss, could you actually produce enough income tax to offset both, and be in a positive position so that as you go forward into these budget cycles, you can still continue to respond to inflation, wage increases, things like that? What we show on here, and we'll get to that in a minute, does come to that conclusion. You have enough capacity at that 1.2% to do that. So that was the primary question that we wanted to answer and provide to you, so that you have some idea of what that looks like. Do you want to have any questions about the big picture, or do you want to start to run through these?
A question, I, I know, we provide quite a bit in terms of property tax credits, things like, what, 70 cents or something like that? Did you look at...
It, it goes away in 2027. That's part of the new income tax. They do not now allow you, after 2027, to subsidize your property tax with that income tax.
Okay.
So that helps drive this property tax loss, because you were subsidizing people's property tax bills. You no longer will be able to do that, which means this many more people now qualify for circuit breaker.
Okay.
And the all, also by driving up that rate going forward, you're going to get people closer and closer to that $300 maximum tax credit for their homestead, because you're continuing to increase the cost of the tax bill by driving the rate up.
Yeah.
And I think the, the whole thought of the legislature was, okay, we agreed to 1%, 2%, and 3% tax caps, let's drive these things to that level. And then that will basically serve people out of property tax, because once you get to, every piece of property is paying its maximum amount, the only growth you're going to be able to get in new income in property tax from year to year will be the appreciated value or new growth.
Yeah. Was that number like $7 million? You recall that?
I do not recall.
Yeah, I think you sent me something on that, yeah.
But it's, it's a big number of what you have been subsidizing.
Yeah, I think around seven. Okay, thanks.
Other big picture questions, and, okay? If you want, we'll kind of run through these, if you want to, Mindy, go to the first page, or beyond the cover page there to the, yeah, beyond contents, okay?
In a solution like that, we can go to bond council and say, okay, the statute says we can't do general obligation bonds in these short-term cycles. Does that apply to public works? And bond councils have told me, you know, when they do masses, massive pieces of legislation like this, they create as many loopholes as they have closed. So there may be other options for us to pursue to do those, but we can talk about that over So again, that might help address some of his needs if you want to offload at least equipment. I think that's generally acceptable, but we may actually be able to do projects and structure them that way accordingly as well. Now, the downside to that is you will be putting more into property tax rolls. The more you put on the property tax rolls, the higher that rate gets, the higher the circuit breakers get, and the, like I say, basically the homestead, that $300 for each homestead is getting pulled up too by the higher we get the rate, which is going to net collect fewer tax dollars for the operating side. So again, we're kind of cheating back and forth, and at some point in time, we'll hit that top where we're going to be basically all the property tax we have, other than new growth and appreciation. So there's no more property to really tax. Next page. Oh, MBH restricted. Again. [inaudible] Now, as we've talked about before, the calculus of these curves for circuit breaker are more parcel-based. We do not have parcel data. The county might benefit from a parcel analysis if you wanted to go that route. There are a few firms that do that. I don't know how long the line is now, based on all the legislation, or how expensive it is. But what we believe is that we've put together a model for you that I think, big-picture-wise, will get us from here to there if we're conservative and, you know, continue to make those decisions and respond to those changes year over year.
What's your assumption on expenditures?
Three percent.
Three percent.
And, yeah, the end pages of your financial plan are all the assumptions that make the projections true. And like I say, shouldn't be anything in there that's really outlandish. Any other questions, anything I can help with? I know that was a lot.
That's a lot, yeah. I'm just, yeah, it's a lot to digest, and still thankful the state made it so much easier for us. But we are where we are, but luckily, we're in a decent position, as you said, and I appreciate that, so.
There's some more tweaking as it comes along, some smarter heads get together, or is it?
Thanks for bringing it up, the tweaking part, not the smarter heads thing, because it'll be the same people who tweak it, that built it. But the guy from the House and the guy from the Senate who stood on the floor and said, you know, "I know this isn't perfect, but, you know, we will tweak it," basically, "as we go forward." And we have two years before a lot of these implementations have to take place on the income tax side. So I believe that they will tweak things, so what we have today may not necessarily be that. The other thing is, as I started this out, from a county perspective, you're in a good position. You've got money that, you know, you can work with. The cities and towns, special taxing districts, fire districts, township fire, all these things, they will be coming to you because you are the only people who now can bail them out of where they're at. So don't be surprised that you will start to get these presentations of, hey, this is, I'm going to need you to adopt a .4 fire and EMS rate, et cetera, for different things in order for them to survive. Because what we're seeing is, even in the authority that they gave for new income taxes, which was for a city or a town above 3,500, they could impose their own 1.2%. Well, what we're finding is the 1.2% on their property or their income tax base is not going to be enough to replace the income tax that was lost. So there's going to be some impetus on the county to impose probably some other income taxes for the use around the county of other units of government. And again, we can kind of evaluate those as they come in.
And other states that implement higher sales taxes along this step, when they find out that things aren't in balance, and they look at raising sales tax another percent, just like they did with the cigarette and tobacco tax, then try to find, state will try to find ways of implementing something that the other people that they work with, that they did, if they would just let them.
Could be.
I did want to chime in and say that we are talking to a company to do a parcel analysis. So we've already started those discussions. The pricing is extremely reasonable with the guy that we're going to use and, or that we're suggesting you use. And we've already sent them all of our data. It's just a matter of making sure it's good data that, for reasons I won't say in a public meeting.
But thank you very much. This is great to know, and I can't end, it's going to get down to, just like you said, what people were about. If you can't, it's not active yet, that's the sad thing, is that they put on the ones that you have to change. They just need to thank you.
You know, that's been their MO for quite a while, is, yeah, you at the local level, you'll make those income tax decisions on your own people.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the information.
Appreciate it.
Next up, Brian, wanted to add an intern as well, so this is kind of similar to the last thing we just did with the prosecutor, just a different line.
Yes, this is the same process we use for the legal intern for prosecutor's office. We asked Addie to do the analysis based on information from Brian for the job description, and the recommendation came back the same as the legal intern for prosecutor, if it was in the PATB category. And Addie also did the analysis if it was going to be in the special occupation position, and it's the same range of 2318 to $30.39 per hour.
We'd just like to be treated the same. And I would say, we would, I would like to, if the court, if the council approves that, to pay that out of our open position line that we have right now. Because there hasn't been, there's plenty of money there, it hasn't been used all year, so.
You have a person in mind?
Yes.
Tell us about them.
He's a, he's a, just finished second year of law school, be going into his third year. He's a certified legal intern, he's done the paperwork for that. He's a former veteran. He, same way with Jake, is the idea of trying to get people, come here and stay. He's from this area, right now, he's living in Greencastle. He has a couple of children, and he wants to stay here, so he contacted, contacted us.
Does he have intern experience in the past?
No.
Okay.
No.
So you're going to pay this out of a line item for another, one of your open positions rather than your supplemental fund?
That was my suggestion. If the council would rather me pay that with supplemental, I'm fine with that, too.
I guess, I mean, it comes out one way or another, I guess. I, well, I guess we're being consistent with the way the prosecutor's got that, I guess there's a little different with the, their, their fund, the, yeah, pre-trial, sorry.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Right, no, obviously not, yeah, yeah, but, so.
But here again, yeah, the money's already been budgeted, so we're not, you know, we're not asking for any additional funds.
For this year, yeah, no, okay.
Brian's supplemental has restrictions, so we better pay it out of the line he's suggesting.
Okay. Thank you for that information. There you go. All right, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, any other questions for Brian? All those, oh, I'm sorry, the, same as we did for the, Mike, same as we did for prosecutor?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Thirty thirty-nine, okay. So any other questions? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. Now I have to go run and do an actual hearing.
Good luck. All right, next up, we've been talking about, last month, we got rid of the ERPS committee, now we've got the new job classification and compensation maintenance plan, which I think, does everybody, did everybody get a copy of this? Okay. And you guys have reviewed this, and have you reviewed this? Okay. So we need to talk about this, and another component of that is if we want to do a committee of a council member, commissioner, to review any requests to whether the compensation consultant needs to review the request. Does that make sense?
This is the recommendation Addie, as part of the process to develop the compensation plan, the committee asks her to develop a maintenance plan on how we deal with new requests. So this outlines that process. It does replace the ERPS committee with a new committee of three council members and a commissioner, where requests would be submitted to them, and they would decide if the consultant would then do a study on whether or not the position was warranted to have a change in compensation. It does establish a time restriction on the app, the requests for, if I remember correctly, for the months of January to April, so you won't, you would not be getting requests after April. And there are conditions of what can be requested. You can request a job review, for a job review or a new position, reclassification.
Now, as we've talked about before, the calculus of these curves for circuit breaker are more parcel based. We do not have parcel data. The county might benefit from a parcel analysis if you wanted to go that route. There are a few firms that do that. I don't know how long the line is now, based on all the legislation, or how expensive it is. But what we believe is that we've put together a model for you that I think, big picture wise, will get us from here to there if we're conservative and, you know, continue to make those decisions and respond to those changes year over year.
What's your assumption on expenditures?
Three percent.
Three percent, yeah.
And, yeah, the end of pages of your financial plan are all the assumptions that make the projections true. And like I say, shouldn't be anything in there that's really outlandish. Any other questions? Anything I can help with? I know that was a lot.
That's a lot, yeah. I'm just, yeah, it's a lot to digest and so thankful the state made it so much easier for us. But we are where we are, but luckily we're in a decent position, as you said, and I appreciate that, so.
Thanks for bringing it up, the tweaking part, not the smarter heads thing, because
it'll be the same people who tweak it, that built it. But the guy from the House and the guy from the Senate who stood on the floor and said, you know, I know this isn't perfect, but, you know, we will tweak it, basically, as we go forward. And we have two years before a lot of these implementations have to take place on the income tax side. So I believe that they will tweak things, so what we have today may not necessarily be that. The other thing is, as I started this out, from a county perspective, you're in a good position. You've got money that, you know, you could work with. The cities and towns, special taxing districts, fire districts, township fire, all these things, they will be coming to you because you are the only people who now can bail them out of where they're at. So don't be surprised that you will start to get these presentations of, hey, this is, I'm going to need you to adopt a .4 fire and EMS rate, et cetera, for different things in order for them to survive. Because what we're seeing is, even in the authority that they gave for new income taxes, which was for a city or a town above 3,500, they could impose their own 1.2%. Well, what we're finding is the 1.2% on their property or their income tax base is not going to be enough to replace the income tax that was lost. So there's going to be some impetus on the county to impose probably some other income taxes for the use around the county of other units of government. And again, we can kind of evaluate those as they come in.
I did want to chime in and say that we are talking to a company to do a parcel analysis. So we've already started those discussions. The pricing is extremely reasonable with the guy that we're going to use and, or that we're suggesting you use. And we've already sent them all of our data. It's just a matter of making sure it's good data that, for reasons I won't say in a public meeting.
You know, that's been their MO for quite a while. It's, yeah, you at the local level, you'll make those income tax decisions on your own people.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the information.
Appreciate it.
Next up, Brian, wanted to add an intern as well. So this is kind of similar to the last thing we just did with the prosecutor, just a different line.
Yes, this is the same process we use for the legal intern for prosecutor's office. We asked Addy to do the analysis based on information from Brian for the job description, and the recommendation came back the same as the legal intern for prosecutor, if it was in the PATB category. And Addy also did the analysis if it was going to be in the special occupation position. And it's the same range of 2318 to $30.39 per hour.
We'd just like to be treated the same. And I would say, we would, I would like to, if the court, if the council approves that, to pay that out of our open position line that we have right now. Because there hasn't been, there's plenty of money there. It hasn't been used all year, so.
You have a person in mind?
Yes.
Can you tell us about them?
He's a, he's a, I just finished second year of law school, be going into his third year. He's a, he's a certified legal intern. He's done the paperwork for that. He's a former veteran. He, same way with Jake, is the idea of trying to get people, come here and stay. He, he's from this area. Right now, he's living in Greencastle. He has a couple of children, and he wants to stay here. So he contacted, contacted us and...
Does he have intern experience in the past?
No.
Okay.
No.
So you're going to pay this out of a line item for another, one of your open positions rather than your supplemental fund?
That was my suggestion. If the council would rather me pay that with supplemental, I'm fine with that, too.
I guess, I mean, it comes out one way or another, I guess. I, well, I guess for being consistent with the way the prosecutor's got that, I guess there's a little difference with the, their, their fund. The, yeah, pre-trial, sorry.
Yeah, we, we don't have that on the defense side.
Right, no, obviously not. Yeah, yeah, but, so.
But here again, yeah, the money's already been budgeted, so we're not, you know, we're not asking for any additional funds.
For this year, yeah, no, okay. Okay. Thank you for that information. There you go. All right, enter into motion.
Move to approve.
All right, any other questions for Brian? All those, oh, I'm sorry, the, same as we did for the, Mike, same as we did for prosecutor?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Thirty thirty-nine, okay. So any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you very much. Now I have to go run and do an actual hearings.
Good luck. All right, next up, we've been talking about, last month, we got rid of the ERPs committee. Now we've got the new job classification and compensation maintenance plan, which I think, does everybody, did everybody get a copy of this? Okay. And you guys have reviewed this, and have you reviewed this? Okay. So we need to talk about this. And another component of that is if we want to do a committee of a council member, commissioner, to review any requests to whether the compensation consultant needs to review the request. Does that make sense?
This is the recommendation. Addy, as part of the process to develop the compensation plan, the committee asks her to develop a maintenance plan on how we deal with new requests. So this outlines that process. It does replace the ERPs committee with a new committee of three council members and a commissioner, where requests would be submitted to them, and they would decide if the consultant would then do a study on whether or not the position was warranted to have a change in compensation. It does establish a time restriction on the app, the requests for, if I remember correctly, for the months of January to April. So you won't, you would not be getting requests after April. And there are conditions of what can be requested. You can request a job review, for a job review or a new position, reclassification of a position, or reorganization of the office, or adding a new position. And there are forms that departments would have to be, fill out to submit to the committee, and they would have to present to the committee, and the committee would decide whether or not to proceed with the analysis.
I know we had a little discussion on this, and I was thinking what we had, we had talked about earlier is that Tom be the point person, I mean, the request actually go through Tom. And then Tom would prepare a staff report, maybe, for the committee? I'm just throwing things out for discussion, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just note, well, they don't want, one of the concerns I had, and I've said this before, but this, this proposal replaces the ERPs committee with another committee. And under changes of the open door law, the state legislature, I mean, these are not the kind of things you really want to discuss in the open, in my opinion. It's personnel, and I'm not sure why we would want to do that. Under this proposal, you would have to have all those committee meetings in public. So I think, I talked about it training a little bit, but now, if you have one council person, just one council person and one commissioner and Mr. Klein and somebody else, they can meet in private and, and do some work for you. Under this maintenance plan, it, we're right back to where we were. It's three council members, which serves no purpose. If the purpose is to keep you under a majority for three, you still have to comply with the open door law. I don't know what the reason could possibly be for a proposal to have three of you be on a committee.
That's more than we had before.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't understand it. You're free to do what you want to do, but I mean, we're just getting, some of this just looks like we're going backwards. So I would, I would recommend that you look hard at that and see really who you want to do vetting, and how many people need to be involved, and how that should work best. Ultimately, everything has to come to you anyway. I just see, I see, do not understand what this accomplishes, other than make you, it would require you to have additional public meetings.
So if you were to write out, what would be your recommendation?
My recommendation would be a commissioner and a council person and Tom Klein to be that initial re-veter, the reviewing, you know, what do we do next? Does it go to WIS or doesn't it? And what recommendations to make. That, to me, would be more streamlined. You have representation. Commissioners have a big role in compensation. Tom is kind of your in-house compensation person. It would be much smoother, it would be faster. And in those situations where there might be difficult conversations about one of your employees, those don't have to be held in public then. And I think it's, now, everything is going to have to come back to you. That committee wouldn't make any decisions, but that's what I'd recommend.
Yeah, that's fine. I can work on amending this plan with Dan, and then submit a revised maintenance plan to you in June.
Sounds good to me? Everybody good? Okay. There's no concerns? We'll just table that until next month. All right. Any funded organization reports? I think they all bailed on us, probably. Department heads? Andrea, go ahead, or whoever. Sure.
There have been no changes to how we'll handle that so far, so.
So then, yes, we'll be doing June.
Yes.
So what is the council recommendation to department heads to start initially putting in, first day, our advertised budget? We always want to go on the high end, we can never go backwards on that concept.
Correct.
Do we put the 3% as Jeff Peters has in his report? No, our employees are not getting that number. It's just our advertised number and adjusting as we go along. Because June is next month.
That is a good point. I appreciate you bringing that up. Yeah, I think since we've got the 3% in the plan to look at, we can work with that. That gives us some room to wiggle one way or another. Not promising that it's going to be 3%, but.
So to go ahead and say, department heads, you do 3% or stay here?
Yeah, yeah. Just go ahead and put 3% in as a working number at this point.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Legal officials, department heads? Oh, go ahead.
Hello, good morning. I just wanted to take a chance to introduce myself. I'm Leah Dick. I started in September 2024. I'm the department head for the Soil and Water Conservation District. And I just had not been to a council meeting yet, so I wanted to say hi. If you have not been to our office yet, we're located in the USDA Service Center on Lebanon Road. We offer garden site visits to help people get their gardens started, or invasive site visits to help people eradicate their invasive plant species. And then I just have a couple things to hand out to you guys. I have our 2024 annual report of all the exciting things we did in 2024, or at least that I saw in, from September to December. And then I also have our quarter one newsletter of some of the stuff we have going on right now. And then also my business card with my contact info. If you have any questions or need any conservation needs, we're here for you. So I'll pass this out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Well, she's passing those out. I'll just jump in.
Go ahead.
So we can keep it going. Tax, last day to pay taxes was yesterday, so the property offices will hopefully be able to breathe starting today. We will begin settlement very shortly. I wanted to introduce Paula Green. We just hired her, and we are extremely fortunate. She has a lot of experience in the auditor's office, both here in Invin County. So we have high hopes, and we'll be doing some different things in our offices that we'll talk about later. And we also just got notified that the state and federal audit is to begin at any given moment. So look for the auditors. I'm assuming we'll see them probably first of next week, and they'll be here for probably three months. So that's all I have.
Tom? I've got three things. I just want to thank auditor's office, treasurer's office, and assessor's office for the work last couple of weeks with everyone coming in. I know the assessor has a lot of folks still coming in due to the assessments that were going out. I think the deadline to appeal is June 15th or 16th. But also, David mentioned the police memorial week. The event is tomorrow at 3:00. The time has been changed, so if you have gone in previous years, it used to be, I think, at 5:00. Now it's at 3:00 out at the sheriff's office. And then the last item I just want to bring up, you've probably noticed that 231 work has begun again, and NDOT tells us it'll be done by October. So if anyone wants to put money on that, good luck.
What's your, what's your number?
Uh, October 2020.
They did say October of this year, so, yeah.
This year, wow. All right. Dan, you got anything else?
I will have a new law update for you next month.
There we go.
It'll be exciting. There's a lot.
All right, Mr. Katie.
The agenda this time, because when I was reading through, I needed to go back and look at those minutes. So if we can get the minutes when we get the agenda, please, that would be very helpful. Yes. And then, in addition to the police memorial, remember that this is the month we celebrate, celebrate veterans, those who gave it all, and those who have served.
That is true. Thank you for reminding me of that. Most of you, it looks like, have your computers. Some of you still have them in boxes. So we're going to, hopefully, transition to more of a digital function, so you should have all this information pushed to, we're still kind of working out, we're going to push that, whether it's via email or on the server, so. But you can get it set up. If you need any help, contact Edge IT, because I'm no help on that, so. And we do have two claims for, as usual, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Peters would like to be paid. So we've got two claims there that need to be motioned for approval.
Move a second.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our next regular meeting will be June 10th, 9:00 a.m., right here at the same place. Same bat time, same bat channel. Motion, adjourn?